I'd like to call the Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission meeting for January 6, 2022. To order, um, to begin, uh, we will do a roll call.
Mr. Axell?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Geist?
Here.
Ms. Horton?
Here.
Ms. Stalter?
Here.
Okay, um, I guess I'd just like to double check a few things. We do have a quorum here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, uh, this is a public meeting, correct? And so therefore, I just want to double check that we've done things according to law and protocol. The announcement went out within thirty days or the required timeframe, correct?
Uh, ten days.
Ten days.
And, uh, the, it's also been mailed to, uh, residents within five hundred feet.
Okay, and, um, just for the record, anybody among us, uh, you had the agenda for about five days or greater in case number eight twenty-seven and eight twenty-four A, had a chance to take a look at those? Um, and any concerns with conflict of interest? And Jeff? You good?
I am good, thank you.
Okay, great, okay. Given that, we are ready for staff report. Um, are we gonna, uh, do the agenda? Uh, should we go ahead and, um, have a motion to accept the agenda in the order for which it has been sent to us? Case number eight twenty-seven, then eight twenty-four A, minutes and adjournment.
Okay.
Okay? Need a motion?
So move.
Is that you, sir?
Yeah.
Well, second.
Kristen, second. Any objections?
Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Uh.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Stalter?
Yes.
All right, Axell.
Okay, staff report on eight twenty-seven, please.
I'm just gonna quickly read the, uh, public hearing notice. Um, so the purpose of the hearing is so the commission, uh, the zoning commission may review an act on an application by property owners Derrick and Kelly Heine to reclassify two parcels into the agricultural, which is A1 zoning, uh, classification. The, uh, parcels are, um, B zero three, zero 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 two, zero zero two, nine, zero 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 four eight zero zero, and then four seven zero zero as well, so they're, um, kinda right next to one another. Um, and then, yes, I do have a brief staff report. Um, so, staff believes the facts in this case are relatively straightforward. Um, these two parcels, and we'll show you on a map here in just a moment, were purchased by Derrick and Kelly Heine, uh, from the previous owner, who had subdivided them, uh, into residential plots. Uh, it was her plan to sell them out and have folks build their housing on them. Actually, they're the only two parcels in the township's owned E, uh, estate, ES two point five. Um, apparently, the previous owner wasn't able to develop those parcels or sell them. It didn't work out. Uh, it's my understanding from talking with the applicants that their plan is to perform agricultural activities once they recombine those parcels, so they'd like to all be zoned A1 ag, like the surrounding areas. Um, so, the zoning surrounding these parcels is also A1. In fact, the ES two point five is more spot zoning than anything else, so staff kinda looks at this as a, as a positive move towards, um, you know, more localized kinda, uh, area zoning. Um, and it also fits what the applicant has expressed, the purpose, the land use for the parcels to be, so. Um, it was, so the proposed rezoning was reviewed by Green County Regional Planning. They pass, or they recommended approval with resolution twenty-one, twelve, fourteen dash four E. Um, that resolution's in your case packet as well. So, like I said, staff strongly recommends approval of the proposed zoning change. Um, it's the owner's intent to engage in agricultural production, and the zoning should reflect this land use. So, uh, just very quickly, I wanna take a look at the two parcels here. So, what I did was actually pull the zoning map, so you can see all this is A1 zoning around it. Um, and also, there's A1 up here as well, uh, although that's Fairborn, so it's still agricultural zoning. Um, and that just gives you an idea. You can see, you know, how these were broken out, uh, to, you know, into residential lots with a driveway kinda through them, and there's actually also an access drive here. Um, I, you know, staff thinks it's, uh, this is a positive change, and so, like I said, we recommend it. I've got the application here, um, and then the regional planning recommendation, and then a, a copy of the public hearing notice as well. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have for staff, um, and the applicants are here as well to answer questions, so.
Welcome, thank you for the report. At this time, do you have any questions for staff?
No.
I have, I have one question. Across the street, and I believe it's to the north. I'm not sure, based on how that map was laid out. Um, you said Fairborn had agricultural to the right of that.
Yeah, I believe.
To the left.
This.
What is that zoned?
Let me go check for you, and I don't know that I'll be able to find that out from GIS. Um, I don't believe Fairborn has their zoning logged in there.
What's on that property?
I, you know, that's like.
Catch basin.
Let's go take a look.
Little creek.
Cause I'm thinking that's the pumpkin farm.
No.
No, it's across that.
I think it's Warner's.
Basically, just a catch basin.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, maybe the pumpkin farm's down one quarter. Okay.
Do you guys know what it is?
I think it's like a, the changing direction.
Yeah. It's kinda like a train.
It is weird, isn't it?
Where are we?
Down the dome, yeah, near these guy.
Oh, this parcel?
Yes, that one.
So, it's my understanding that, uh, there's no current use of the parcel, but I have heard rumblings that it may be developed into residential. Um, but that, I mean, it wouldn't have anything to do with us.
No, no, I know that, I know that. I was just curious as, what it was zoned as now? The one that's across is that.
Down, probably. Zoning.
Now, if you go up to the layers, you can hit zoning.
Yeah.
Suburban residential now.
Yeah, they've already zoned it suburban residential.
And I don't think they could build it out. I think that's old Warner property that they couldn't put those residential things on because of the water.
It could be.
Yeah, it very mu, uh, very well could be. I mean, you can see.
Right.
And it's, it's definitely.
And that water then, if I've got my bearings, feeds in across to the, I'll call it the preserve, the reserve, whatever.
Cougar, Kugler, wetland, Kugler?
Right. Um. When we, when you ask about staff checking, you know, you ask on behalf of staff if we had any recommendations for, um, looking at that, we said something to the effect of having them take a look at the water, the drainage, et cetera, just to make sure that things were cool there, um, for the, um, wetland prairie. Did they have any comments about that?
Um, no, I mean, as far as we're aware, um.
Okay.
You know, the agricultural runoff is gonna be less than any kind of resid, you know, the water flow from an agricultural use is gonna be less than any kind of development, including a residential home, just cause of the impervious surface that you add with that residential construction, so.
Certainly, certainly. Okay, well, that was all I wanted to make certain that there wasn't any concern about that.
Sure.
Um, next we, uh, hear from the applicant.
So just come on up and, uh, yeah, just so the bikes will pick you up.
Oh, yes, let, let me tell you what you do. You come on up to the podium, state your name and address, and, um, just tell us about the goals.
I'm Derrick Heine, address is two six nine nine Beaver Valley Road. Our goal, we bought that property from the former owner that owned all of that at one point. And then she, I don't know why she subdivided, I think she was just trying to.
I could tell you.
Maxim, I mean, we've all heard stories. She was trying to maximize the output of that property, I think. So, we, over the years, have slowly been able to recoup all that property into our name. By one, that lot that is in question actually was owned by another gentleman that was gonna build on it. He decided to build elsewhere, so he offered it to us to buy, so we did. So we didn't buy that one from Nina, we bought it from the person that she sold it to. All the rest of them, we have bought from the previous Nina Griffith owner. We did just acquire that whole corner there from Kugler, from Jack Kugler. So now, we just wanna make it all agriculture across there. We don't want development going on.
Did you buy the big house up on the hill too?
That's, yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, that whole.
This here?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, the, the side entrance, the.
That goes back to our barn, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that goes up and that belongs to whoever had the other.
Yeah, that we bought all at the one time.
So you've got the whole, the whole thing.
Yes, and we wanna keep it that way.
So I wanna get my bearings, just to make sure I understand, to the left, the farthest left, is that the old Kugler? Is that the Kugler property that you observed, or is it?
This one right here.
That's the one we just acquired from Jack, yeah.
Okay.
Cause Arthur, his brother originally built that house.
Right.
They were next to each other, and through their land development process, they've sectioned stuff off, I think, just through the estate. So, Jack and Arthur, we met with both of them, and they said, "That's kind of a keystone to that property. We'll give you first dibs on buying it." Cause they actually tried to develop that a couple of years ago. They had a zoning meeting to develop that. And we were here, and they ended up canceling that meeting, cause we didn't want a gas station or something going in right there. So, I think he knew we were interested in it and offered it to us after whatever their plan was fell through. So, we're trying to just acquire all that and put it all back to agriculture. Cause my goal to build on the one furthest on the bottom, the one that's more in question, that one, I wanna put a building on that, like a barn, an agriculture barn, to store equipment and such. If not now, later, but I want it to be zoned properly for that. I just don't want it to be residential, cause I don't want, we'll never build a house on it. At least, that's not my goal.
And actually, if it's, if it maintains this zoning, unless there's a primary principal structure on it, you cannot theoretically build an accessory structure on there, so.
As it is currently zoned.
Right, as it's currently.
Right, correct, yes.
So, yes, I remember the discussion about commercial use.
Yeah, and I wasn't happy with that.
Well.
You weren't the only one.
You know, I love the land, so I'll say it that way.
Me too, yes. And I wanna, we're right across with the wetlands, I wanna keep it all as natural as possible.
However, I also respect the landowner, the property owner, to, um.
I mean, it's their right to develop it if they can.
Correct.
Yes.
Given that, I love the whole idea of the agricultural rezoning. Um, when that conversation took place about development, there was a discussion about how that wasn't a large enough piece of property. So, in that, my question would be, is the ad, is it advantageous at that point that if it would go back to agricultural, you put it into one parcel?
That's what I wanna do. I wanna combine that corner with those two orange ones.
Yes.
All as the same parcel. That's our goal.
Would allow it to be a larger parcel.
Correct, and I just think it'd be easier for tax purposes. We're getting one bill instead of three separate bills.
I hear you.
I just think paperwork aspect would be a whole lot easier, cause our bank already has a problem with parcel numbers getting confused on it. They keep saying they pay the taxes and they don't, because they got the wrong parcel number. So, it's kinda a nightmare that way. So that is our goal, is just to combine it and keep it the way it is.
Do you all have any questions?
I'm good.
Anything else? I thought you were mumbling some, okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So at this time, um, thank you very much, sir. At this time, um, we ordinarily open this portion of the meeting to the public for anyone who wants to discuss for, against, any comments about it. Is there anyone who's here that would like to discuss this particular application? Given that, I don't think I need to open a public portion of the meeting.
Uh, you can note that you, that you, seeing none, you can open it and close it.
You need to open and then you can close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, at this time, I'd like to open the public portion of the meeting and call to the podium anyone who is for the application. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and ask if there is anyone who would like to come to the podium to speak against the application. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to come to the podium to speak neither for nor against, or to provide general comment? Seeing none, I'd like to close the portion, the public portion of the meeting. It's time now for the zoning board to have a discussion. Is there anything that you all would like to discuss?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the application as submitted, with conditions for denying.
I'll make a motion, we accept the application as submitted.
Second.
All right.
You wanna call further?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Stalter?
Yes.
All right, thank you, board. Congratulations. Um, so, we'll have a resolution made up, uh, hopefully tomorrow, maybe next week. We'll send that out to you as kinda proof of, you know, the rezoning and everything. Um, and essentially, you can consider it rezoned, so congratulations.
Sort of any family emergencies on my behalf, or snowstorm, that does not allow, um, staff to get to, uh, get the signature, it should be, pre-processed quickly.
No snowstorms.
I want one.
So, you're welcome to stick around for our next case, but you don't have to. I know most people interested, okay.
You may be sorry.
Um, okay, so I think we're ready to move on.
We are ready for the next case.
All right, and so, uh, give me a moment here. Um, so our next case, uh, eight twenty-four dash A is actually a minor modification. Um, as the board knows, our zoning resolution, uh, classifies these not as a fully public hearing requiring notice or anything like that. Uh, it only goes to the zoning commission, so this does not get forwarded to the trustees for their consideration. Um, very quickly, uh, I'll read my staff report for this, uh, case. Um, so the applicant, in this case, is Artisan Communities. They're developing the courtyards neighborhood in the Stone Hill Village PUD. Uh, the township trustees did approve their specific site plan, uh, resolution number twenty-two-one oh-nine-two-seven dash ZC dash A on September twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, following that approval, the applicant brought the site plan to Green County Regional Planning for their review process. Uh, during this review process, a number of changes to the site plan were requested. Those changes have been approved as incidental modifications. You remember, we put that, um, condition, so to speak, on the resolution. Um, however, there were a couple of, uh, changes that were requested by the developer that are adjacent to those changes, but they're not, they're not, um, born of specific recommendations from regional planning, and so they need to come back here for a minor modification request. Um, what these requests amount to is essentially reduced setback sizes on a number of lots. Um, and we'll talk about them a little bit more in detail here, but, so for some context, when rear yard setbacks are reduced, the most common concerns for the township are, um, the reduced ability of residents to improve their rear yard with a shed, or a pool, or a deck, what have you. Um, in this case, the nature of the planned community kinda prevents those improvements from being made. Their, uh, their HOA has a strict policy for not improving, uh, the yards. Basically, the configuration of the lots also pretty much, um, only leaves room for the building pad and then a small courtyard either to the side or the back. Um, so, that typical, uh, kind of objection we, we have to reducing setbacks is mitigated here because they don't have the ability in the first place to be diminished. Um, and then looking at the request through the lens of public planning and land use, the requested changes do not reduce the required open space below the thirty percent threshold, so we're not concerned about that either. Um, some of the requested changes are motivated by the developer seeking additional homestyle options on the lot. So, basically, the setbacks as they are now limit the home buyer's option to maybe two out of five or six potential options in a range of sizes. Um, in, in speaking with the applicant, uh, you know, their stated goal is to, okay, we made these changes to, um, satisfy regional planning, we, we're asking if we can reduce these setbacks to offer additional home, um, options. We thought that was a pretty fair compromise, especially considering the, you know, minimal amount that they're reducing the setbacks. Um, so I do have a drawing, I'll, I'll share that to you in a little bit, but I just wanna quickly go over the different reductions where they are. Um, so we have lots forty-six and forty-seven that like those rear setbacks reduced to twenty feet. Um, that was, excuse me, requested due to lots proximity to an open space row of trees. The developer wants to maintain building style options, like I said, and also wants to have sufficient open space behind the lots so that people can walk, you know, in between the trees in the lot essentially, and have that be open space. Um, lots seventy-three, seventy-four, ninety-one, and ninety-two also requesting, uh, reduction to twenty feet. Um, seventy-four and ninety-one are actually, um, located, uh, on or adjacent to interior corners, so they have the two required front yard problem that we typically encounter. Um, and lots seventy-five and ninety-two are adjacent to interior corner lots, so the, the two front yards affects these lots kinda tangentially by being next to them. Um, again, this would allow them to have additional homestyle choices for the residents. Uh, in lots one oh-two through one fourteen, so there's a row, uh, along the top, and I'll show you that. Um, they wanna reduce the rear setback lines to fifteen feet. The lots are located adjacent to a required storm sewer, so this is the actual storm sewer pipe that's going through what would've been the backyards, and actually, we asked them to kinda move those backyard lots away from that and have it all in open space. Doing so kinda shortened their lot length, and that's why they're asking for these reductions. Um, and then finally, lot one hundred and sixty-two, they wanna reduce the rear setback line to ten feet. It's another interior corner lot. Um, it's a, you'll see on the map, it's got a weird orientation to the rest of the lots. It, it kinda opens up from a small point in the back to an arc. Um, and so, it's awkward for them to try to place a home on the site, a build pad on the site. Um, for recommenda, well, let me, let's take a look, look at the map real quick. So. All right, so they sent over a map that kinda shows you what we're talking about here. So these are the lots, uh, that we're talking about that have the storm sewer pipe back behind them. And so, this is the reduction of that setback line. You see, this is actually a storm sewer easement, and then this is just an open space. Um, there, you see, there's also this existing tree line, and it kinda goes, actually, this one seems to maybe even dip into these yards. They, they also wanna pull the setbacks away from this tree line to save as much of it as possible. Um, this is the awkward lot that we talked about. Um, something to note is that the rear yard, what we would consider the rear yard is really this area here, and because these don't have any reduced setbacks, there'd still be a significant amount of building clearance between what's potentially here and anything here. And there will still be the same amount of required clearance between these two sides of any buildings as well. So, it, it doesn't, we don't, we're not worried about running into a, a situation where buildings are too close together here. Um, let me show you the interior lots. So these are the ones I'm talking about, seventy-four and ninety-one have the two required front yards. And then these are next to them. Again, just trying to, uh, open up the building pad space a little bit from where it was. And then, we have these two lots here, which is what we were talking about with trying to have some open space in between this tree line, um, and being able to save as much of it as possible again. So, those are the requested changes. Um, staff is here to answer any questions. We also do have the applicant here to answer questions as well. Um, so yeah, um, uh, let me go back to my recommendations, sorry. So, staff does recommend approval of the requested minor modifications. Um, these changes do affect maintenance conditions for public infrastructure, so, for instance, that row, uh, up front with the reduced yard setbacks is gonna allow for, when we eventually have to maintain that storm sewer pipe, for it to, um, not be in the way of, um, not, not have buildings and, uh, people's, you know, expected yard area to be in the way of that. Um, but also, it does, like I said, it, it opens up the opportunity for those residents to live there, to have more choice in, in the homes that they're gonna buy. It does not reduce open space percentage for the development, and also because of those HOA regulations that prohibit, uh, any kind of improvements in rear yards and things like that, uh, we're not concerned about a kind of diminishment of people's enjoyment of their property either. So that's why we recommend approval. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions? I know, I'm thinking too, so.
Can you flip back to the map?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which one's particularly?
Yeah, that's good there.
Well, while you're thinking.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a question about, you said that access to the s, storm sewer, isn't that automatically an easement anyway?
It is an easement. They, they put it in an easement upon our request and upon regional planning's, uh, requirements, which is why their lot lines now are, their side, their, their rear yard setbacks are farther up against it than they had originally planned.
So I'm thinking about the recommendation statement about access. Is it, have they access anyway, if there's an easement?
Yeah, I mean, they will have access, um, either way, right, being an easement. Um, so this just kind of, it compromises between our access and then the enjoyment of the lot, right? It, it is a bit of a compromise there, um, but.
The other question, and I, it's just because, it's always an opportunity for learning, every one of these are. Um, and, um, my question is, in terms of the difference between a minor and a major modification as to why this one sits, um, president's for a minor modification as opposed to a major modification?
Sure, and, uh, so I would like to bring up our, um, article seventeen, which kinda goes over that.
Okay.
So, just a moment here. Okay, so, our major modific, this is our, our major modification, um, kind of criteria that needs to be met. So, anything that, right, exceeds the limitations, conditions of the PED's approval res, resolution, and also results in an increase of five percent or more of building coverage, a five percent or greater increase in dwelling unit density, significant redesign of roadways or drainage, an increase of greater than five feet in the height of a building or structure, or major redesign of a building which significantly alters the central architectural design or theme of that building, or modica, modifications not considered to be of minor or incidental character, and that one's more of a judgment call by staff. Um, so, we, staff, did not believe that this met any of those criteria. And so, actually, when you look at minor modifications, it doesn't change its use, doesn't exceed the limitations and conditions of the approval, like, resolution, and an increase of less than five percent in building cr, uh, coverage. So basically, it's the opposite of, it's kinda that five percent threshold between major and minor. Because the total setback reduction is, I mean, not even one percent of the total area, we don't believe, we believe it was minor rather than a major modification. So if that clears it up.
Yes, because my question, I just have to find the language here. Yes, because my question, I just have to find the language here, around that rationale from the applicant in terms of... I have to find the words. I apologize.
That's okay.
Home style options. Home style options. Does not change the percentage in terms of the square footage or that would be on that footprint of those particular parcels?
Well, it, well, that's what I'm talking about. When, when we reduce that rear yard setback, that's essentially, it's essentially adding additional potential building space. And the total reduction over the ten lots is ten feet per lot times ten, so you're talking about about a hundred feet by, you know, however many square feet. We looked at that and compared to the entirety of the development, the total amount of change requested is less than one percent of the total area. So in that way, it's, it is adding potential building space, but it's less than the five percent threshold, which makes it the minor modification.
Got it. Your questions coming to...
Well, I just, that, back to the map again, I mean, those top lots, basically, you're not going to have any backyard because you're going to be up against an easement.
Right.
And that's fine. I guess that's the individual buyer, if they accept that, they're going to know that going in, but, you know, the way those setbacks are drawn on there now, I mean, you've got the, the sewer line or the storm drainage line basically at your back door. And I mean, I guess if people are willing to have that, that's fine. I mean, I, that was my only question, so.
And I think too, I would suggest maybe that the applicant can give you a little bit of an idea of kind of their home product. I think we talked about this several months back when we approved this, right, in September, but their, their home products really don't, they don't leave room for a backyard, right? They're not, that's not the way that...
And I think most of the models have patios already there. I mean, according to that, I mean, you couldn't step out your back door and put a four-foot patio probably beyond an easement.
We have twenty feet, right? I mean, that's your, your rear yard setback would be twenty feet back there.
On the top one?
Yeah, on the top, it would be twenty feet. So they'd have about a twenty-foot backyard, if you want to call it that, right?
Okay. No, I'm, okay.
The process one more time, only because we were here once, talked about it, went to regional planning, it's back, explain the difference between what regional planning said, what the request is, and if, if we need to go back to regional planning for any other eyeball check.
So right, I think if I'm hearing you right, your question right, where it's at in regional planning right now.
Yes.
Is, actually, next Wednesday, they are putting Phase One and Two in, which is this area and then this area. This is Phase Three over here. Phase One and Two are going in for their technical review committee session, which is basically where the engineer, soil and water, gas, electric companies, roads, they all get together and go over what was their preliminary plan that's already been submitted and approved, and make additional recommendations for changes like, you know, hey, this storm pipe needs to move ten feet this way or whatever.
Right.
Those will be covered in the incidental modifications that we put on it when it was originally passed. So if, let's say, based on that, right, the technical review comes in, they say, you've got to move this storm pipe. If they need to come and do additional changes that aren't directly related to that, but tangentially, we would have to come back here. But if it was a direct change, hey, you need to do this and move it here, then we would approve it incidentally. I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so I see the advantage to the applicant. I understand the difference between the major and the minor modification in this decision-making process. Is there... If we were to approve this this evening, where then would, would there need to be any recommendation or concern when it comes to regional planning and their decision-making? Does it, is it advantageous for them for us to do this, or is it going to be like, huh, you, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And I don't, I, you know, we're all a team, we all work together.
No, absolutely, and I think that's a great question to go towards it. Basically, regional planning asks each of the jurisdictions, along with all those people I just mentioned, the engineer and stuff like that, to send in a routing sheet. They send us the plans, they ask us to look at it, provide any comments. What I turned in with our comments was, hey, here are the incidental modifications that we approved, here's the application for the minor modifications that we, you know, will be bringing forward.
This isn't going to be a surprise.
No, it's not. I, I work with Deandra over there at regional planning to make sure that, you know, they're aware of what we're doing as well, so.
Okay. Do you guys have any more questions, you know me? I don't have any. Think of ten more.
I'm good.
Okay. I think at this point in time, Jeff, I'm sorry, did you have any questions?
No, I've read the case and I had no questions, so following all of your questions, I had to follow off.
Thank you. I think at this time, just here from the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. Mike Reeves with Kimley Horn Associates, a civil engineer representing Artisan Communities, seventy-nine sixty-five North High Street, Columbus, Ohio, four three two three five. Thank you for letting us come tonight. You were also spared on the snowstorm as we had a lot more snow in Columbus this evening than you did here, so consider yourself lucky there. We have been working with Max for a while on this project and kind of going through the lot layout and the back and forth. And one of the, the key items that we worked through with the township was ultimately the maintenance of the storm sewer. And the storm sewer kind of was always planned to be located where it was, and initially, we had lots extending up to our property line. And after working through with the township, even with the easement, there was the desire to have the physical storm sewer itself not located on an individual property owner's lot and located in open space. And so we, we agreed to that and, and moved forward, and kind of in that process overlooked that pulling in the lot line closer to the building actually impacted our ability to put the different home options in place on a lot of these lots. And so, you know, we talked about kind of the north side, also those interior lots, the seventy-two, seventy-three, ninety-one, and ninety-two, those were impacted because we shifted, we shifted that whole run down a little bit to give the open space for the storm sewers. And, and so really kind of where this stems from is we want to promote architectural diversity throughout the development. We don't want to just have every home looking the same. And so by allowing these reduced rear yard setbacks, we are able to get back to the same architectural diversity that we had kind of planned on offering prior to making these changes through our, our work with the township and regional planning commission. And then one other item to note, very few, and I, Seth, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, we really, the, the courtyard product is, is kind of where this is coming from, is, is you have a side yard courtyard, and so your outdoor living space typically ends up on the side of the house. We do have some, I'd call them in, built-in interior patios on the rear, but, you know, to the point of having a, a back door, a, a back door and a deck and a patio, none of that ever will fall outside of the building setback. So, you know, there is, for, on the architectural options, do any of them have a true back door, like, coming straight out the back?
Yes, there are some rear patio, we have a rear patio courtyard, which is one offering, but the primary offering are historically, a majority of the community is what's called side courtyard. And so in those side courtyards, the courtyards are more of kind of a pocket park or a niche between the homes, and so when you exit that courtyard through, let's say, a wrought iron fence, there's really no experience behind the home per se to any of the homeowners, it's really the side courtyard. But we do offer as well, depending upon the lots, a rear courtyard option. So for instance, in the southern row, at the southern extremity of the site, that backs up to a hill, up to Mr. Nutter's old estate, and there's tree lines there, and I could see some of those homes being a rear courtyard, for instance, because you would want your home to take advantage of that natural amenity. But, so hopefully that describes it, and ultimately, that makes is really a determination of the home buyer in some cases. So, you know, it's, historically, the side courtyards are a majority of the project, and the rear courtyards are the minority, but again, that, that can fluctuate depending upon the home buyer preference at the end of the day.
Yeah, and so I guess I just bring that up, because I do, I do appreciate the concern that, you know, if someone's walking out their back door, they, they don't have a per se usable yard or a deck, and it's just the way the architecture is designed for these homes, that that really becomes kind of a non-issue and is even restricted, you know, through the, the HOA covenants and restrictions, that you, you can't have a patio, you can't have a deck, you can't have, you can't have pools, you can't have any of that. So the, the grass that's behind the home is, is the grass no matter whether there's a storm sewer or an easement or, or really nothing.
You have a question? So to clarify.
Yes.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question. Am I understanding that courtyards would not be an option without the modifications?
There, there are still courtyard options without the modifications, but it's restricted, some of them are restricted to only one option or two options, and if, and what we're hoping to do is not end up with ten, fifteen homes in a row restricted to those one or two options, so that if someone's driving through the community, they don't say, gee, what happened here, that the, all these homes look exactly the same. We're trying to, it, it's an effort to increase the diversity throughout the development.
All right, thank you so much for that clarification.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Jeff, do you have any questions?
I just, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the time that I need to open the public portion of the hearing, and I've been well-trained today, correct?
Well, you normally would, but because it's a minor mod, you technically don't. You may, if you like.
I would like to have discussion among the board commission, please. Anything? Anything?
Straightforward.
Anything? Jeff? You have any questions, anything you want to say?
No, I'm good.
All right, I will entertain a motion. It's your turn.
Make a motion to approve case number eight twenty-four dash A, as presented.
One second.
Mr. Rassell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Stolpe?
Yes.
Thanks, Lloyd. All right, so congratulations. Like I said, we'll have the resolution made up for you, hopefully tomorrow, maybe Monday, and we'll send that out, and this will be noted Wednesday's technical review as well, so like I said, I submitted that, we'll let them know that it was approved. And yeah, look forward to seeing you on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have shape.
Be careful going on.
Yeah, for real, be careful.
Slow go.
Yeah.
Slow go is the best way.
We have some minutes?
Yep, two sets of minutes.
Okay.
Did you, did the board have an opportunity to read over the minutes? Are there any suggested changes, corrections, or anything of that nature?
We caught a couple of little dates.
Little things.
Yeah, a couple of, and those have been corrected, yeah.
Basically, mentioning one date in the set of minutes that's being talked about and another date, which they approved, minutes from this date, they didn't match. So we went ahead and matched those up. Thanks, folks. Have a nice night. So if there were no suggested changes, then might I recommend just a, a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Oh, second.
Is that two sets?
It has bumped.
It was not, Seth, it was bumped. He was fast on the draw.
He was.
I gave him the look.
I'm a little rusty, I've been around you guys for a while.
We got it, Dan.
Definitely did not mind the December minutes.
Yeah, me too.
Mr. Rassell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
I'm just voting out here.
Oh, approving the two sets of minutes.
Oh, they're good. Yeah, they're good. I do. And here, I don't have anything to do with the fact that I'm virtual, but it is moving along very good.
We're cold.
Excellent. Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Stolpe?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Lloyd. Before we adjourn, if you, if you don't mind, our department had asked me to bring this up with you. So we've got, we passed that M-one mining district, you remember? We are, we've talked with Phillips, I've got a meeting scheduled with Martin Marietta later this month. So we're hoping to bring it forward to you, the actual rezoning. It won't be February, we'll ask you in February to send it to regional planning, but in March. In anticipation of that, and maybe some other business that we want to bring in, in front of you, it was suggested that maybe we start kind of having some work sessions if there's going to be either a zoning map amendment or a text amendment. Prior to that, to kind of go over it with you, maybe a less public setting, you can get your questions out, we can have a more, you know, kind of candid conversation about it so that there's no surprises during the public. Is that something that the zoning commission is interested in, in doing? If so, I'm kind of mean on a semi-regular basis. Basically, anytime we would have specifically text amendments, I'd, I'd ask for a work session, and that's when I would request that you send it to regional planning, I'd request that motion then. So that would allow us to do two things. One, we can, let's say we've got something that comes in and we don't want to wait an entire month to the next meeting to ask you to send it to regional planning? Yeah.
Some of this stuff bad hearing, right?
Me? Speak up, Max.
So Max, were you saying that for a text amendment, you would want to do a work session and at that work session, request a motion to go to regional planning at that time?
Correct, yes.
But a work session is a closed session.
That's right, and it's my understanding, and I'll, we can clarify with Don, it's my understanding that your motion to send it to regional planning, it does not have to be part of a public hearing.
Can it be a recommendation to send it to regional planning?
Yeah.
It would only be when you act on changing the language.
Right.
You can refer it to regional planning for review.
That's what you're...
Recommend that you send it to regional planning for review, it comes back, and then we would have full session. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes. We would, we would talk about it. I'd use that opportunity to get some of your initial feedback, which I think will be helpful. You know, we want to do more of that, where, you know, you guys have...
Well, it sounds efficient.
Yeah, and that's the goal, that's really the goal. I mean, don't get me wrong, it's going to mean probably more meetings than one a month on...
Do we have pizza?
Not on the township's dime, but we can have pizza in here, no, no reason not to eat in here.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And that way, you guys can, you can ask your questions, you can, you know, just go back and forth with each other and get a good understanding of what it is.
We get it, because the last several changes have been, we haven't been, lacked civility in any way, but it's been kind of like, not feel-good, like, it just has been, I don't...
I get the sense, are you familiar with siloing? The, the idea of siloing in an organization where kind of each hand's doing its thing independently of one another? And I, I think maybe that's what we've experienced in the last couple, where I'm, I'm working with the applicant and regional planning and engineer and have all this information, and then I present it to you, you know, a week before you have to make a decision. So I think this would allow me to say, hey, here's everything I know. Here's who I talked to. Here's what they have to say about it.
It feels more collaborative.
Yeah.
A lot more time-consuming, but collaboration does take that.
And I mean, at the same time, if there's somebody else you want to hear from that Max maybe didn't think to contact, you, we'd have time to do that before it comes back to you guys for a vote.
Of course, that never happened.
I feel like a lot of the last couple of things have been big things, but I felt rushed to making decisions. And I, you know, and again, and we've said this before, we're volunteers and to get stuff a week before and to not have all the background and then just have a discussion like this about it, I mean, I just, it's overwhelming.
It is.
And I will say, this is kind of me, you know, bringing that concern to Randy and saying, hey, you know, I, I notice it in you. I've noticed that that's kind of how I feel, that we don't get the chance to really work on it together, which is, in the end, the goal here.
So what I will say in response to it is, I think it's a great idea. I want to remind you that we are volunteers and the intensity of the not, the, the jobs that we have right now, at least in my world, is that, you know, and this, this is definitely a COVID thing. The reality is the intensity of the jobs, just to keep your head above water, is high. So is there a way that if we do a work session and the amount of effort or time that we feel we can volunteer, that we could offset a meeting, if need be, to the next month or to a different date so that we can kind of, you know, be able to adjust our time and schedule enough to, to feel we have the energy to put forth good effort without having that sense of.
I think I, if I understand what you're asking, you're asking, let's say we have a work session, and after talking about it, we realize, hey, this isn't maybe as far along as we thought it was. And so let's say we scheduled the work session two weeks before our next meeting, and we recognize, you know what, I don't think we'd like to hear, at this meeting, it needs more time. I think that's a potential outcome from a work session. It's one that depending, you know, certain things like text amendments, yeah, I, I'm always willing to push that down the road. There are some other things where the tension between our desire to thoroughly think through every bit of it and then pressure on the applicant from outside forces exists. And so I would just ask that if staff is, you know, if that request is made and staff pushes back, that at least it's considered, that maybe we might need to go ahead and do it, you know what I mean? Recognizing that regional planning and some other people might have. So as long as you're, I'm, I, what I'm saying is I'd be glad to discuss that every time, and it's ultimately your decision. But I would just ask that if I mention, hey, you know, maybe we can have another work session in between. I know that's not exactly what we want to be doing, but that might be what I suggest in certain circumstances. Does that make sense?
Yes, because I think sometimes the applicants do have to be concerned about the banker, the funding, the.
Right.
Legal aspects, the whatevers, and we have to have some respect for that. And sometimes us being aware of that without you violating, you know, everything that you know, we get it. We get it. Yeah.
So could I recommend a trial run with this? I've got, I've got three basically actions that we're looking to take, and I think they all could benefit from a work session. So looking at our calendar here.
Separate work sessions or all at one?
No, all, all in one.
All in one.
Two of them I don't think will take very long. We've talked about it a little bit before. The passive recreation and the institutional governmental zoning issue. For like Glen Thompson Reserve, that's basically saying, no development ever. It's only suitable for enjoyment of nature. And that institutional governmental is like the part of Wright-Patterson Air Force Base that's in the township. We want to create those districts. We want to rezone parcels of land just in an effort, like, as we continue to make our map a little bit more useful. And then the other is applying the M-one district to Phillips and Ziny Sand and gravel. So that's, I think if we take it for a trial run, we could maybe do it. And it doesn't have to be Thursdays, but if that works for everybody, that works for me. I was thinking maybe either the twentieth or the twenty-seventh. We could do it by Zoom. You know, it doesn't have to be in here, whatever works for everybody, but I'd like to give it a try.
I need a smart.
I, I don't have a problem. I will not be in attendance in February's meeting. I'm scheduled to be out of town, so.
Okay.
If you're planning on bringing this up, I guess I'll be more than happy to attend a work session. But it would have to be here because I don't have access.
Right, right.
Like last time.
So I'll.
I'll buy the pizza.
Ooh, yeah. I like your style.
More people show up.
I'm coming for sure.
You know, I, I don't want to hold things up, but I know that I'm scheduled to be out of town for the, the February meeting.
And you know, a work session might give us a really good opportunity for those types of situations where we know you won't be here, but hey, I, you know, we've really talked about this. We know lots and thoughts on it, so. Okay. So would the twentieth or the twenty-seventh work better for?
I was going to say the twenty-seventh is going to be during the OTA winter conference.
Oh, yeah.
Probably not going to lie.
Yeah, very good point.
Well, the twentieth is good for me anyways. Twenty-seventh is not good.
We are, yeah.
Yeah, the nineteenth, we've got BZA, so just about any other night that week, I think we're probably. Okay.
Would the twentieth work for everyone?
It does for me.
Jeff, does that work for you?
I cannot do the twentieth.
Oh, can't do the twentieth, okay. Um, what about, and like I said, does it have to be a Thursday?
Well, I don't care if it's on Thursday.
Actually, you know what, I, I'll be time restricted. I might be able to make it work, but I'll be time restricted.
And we could have you join via Zoom if that makes it easier.
That's an idea.
Yeah.
So it sounds like the twentieth ostensibly would work for everyone, at least mostly. So Jeff, how about you? Yeah, the twentieth, let's say six o'clock, we'd meet.
This month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that works for me.
All right, great. Doesn't need to be motioned or anything, but, so I'll just say we're looking to meet at the twentieth at six, and I will send out emails, you know, kind of.
Are you sure we reserve the room?
Yeah.
Can we get a meeting invite?
And a team invite.
Yeah, it'll, yeah, it'll be a teams, a teams invite for anybody who wants to attend via teams. They can. We'll be down here.
Gettin' pizza.
Yeah, exactly. I appreciate your guys' willingness to do this.
What time are we doing? At six o'clock, same time?
Yeah, six, unless you want to meet earlier, but probably not later.
Not later.
Can we put a timeframe on work sessions? Should we do that?
I think.
Or just let them briefly, yeah, time limit.
Yeah, I mean.
Is it pre-flowing or, I don't know.
Six to seven thirty or six to eight?
Yeah, I don't want to stay like forever.
Yeah, because we intend to do that.
And I'm more than happy to, well, A, that'll keep us on task if we know we've got a, let's say, seven thirty close time, no later. I'm perfectly all right with that. And then I would say too, depending on obviously what's on the docket, if we meet for an hour and a half and we still don't have it figured out, that probably is a good sign.
Means that one's not going to. We're not ready. Yeah.
So I, again, I just want to say I really appreciate your willingness to do this. I know I'm asking you to, to volunteer additional time, so thank you.
So in this case, it's the zoning map amendment related to the M-one.
Yeah, that's mostly what I.
And then two other text amendments we haven't seen yet.
Right. You, well, so I can't remember. I think I showed these to you a very long time ago.
I think you did.
I think.
In twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are not words that I'm hearing for the first time.
Yeah, I think we talked about them in twenty-twenty. Obviously, we had a lot of development going on. We had more pressing, you know, the omnibus update and things like that. I think now we're in a place to get this done. And I think it will dovetail nicely with some of the river cleanup stuff that we're hoping Ed's gonna, like a, kind of a more, every year we do a little bit of river maintenance. Those kind of things I think will help if they're zoned, passive recreation as well, so.
So given this, are we ready to adjourn? But I want to ask a question off the record.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
Seth and Kristen?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
He's running the one.
Mr. Rassell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Stolten?
Yes.
All right.